You'd like to bring this meeting to order, the Village of Villa Park Board of Trustees Meeting, September 23rd, 2024. Clark Krennicky, please call the roll.
Trustee Alfano.
Here.
Trustee Cordova.
Here.
Trustee Corkery.
Here.
Trustee Kozar.
Here.
Trustee Kumar.
Trustee Patrick.
Here.
President Kazoun. Here. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening. May we have many meaningful discussions that will help us to assist our village in these trying times. Help us to make the decisions that will affect the staff, directors, and residents of Villa Park. Guide us through the challenges we face, and may we approach each other with respect and kindness as one group. In your name, amen.
Item three, amendments to the agenda.
Do we have any amendments tonight? I haven't seen none. Item four, public comments on agenda items. Clark Krennicky.
Cheryl Tucker has an agenda item. These are 13A and C.
I'm just here as a member of the Park and Rec Commission to please ask you to approve both 13A with approval of leasing of equipment for our new recreation center so that we can move forward on that, and 13C approving the landscaping group that will be making our area around the recreation very beautiful. So I'm just asking you tonight to take into consideration approving those two amendments for us so that we can move forward and have the recreation up and moving for the people of Villa Park as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone else, public comments on agenda items? Okay, item five, public comments on non-agenda items.
Yes, Tina Constatos, a gentleman on North Avenue.
Yes. Hi, my name is Tina Constatos. I am at 632 North Princeton Avenue. I just wanted to bring up an issue that seems to become a hot topic on social media as well as outside. The gentleman who sits at the corner of North Avenue and Addison Road, the handicap gentleman, it seems to be just a very big safety hazard, not just for himself, as I know he was recently hit by a vehicle. It's a safety hazard for everybody who's driving there. The gentleman does sit in the turning lane. He does obscene things and has very nasty comments to women, children, and people as they're driving by. I don't know if there's some sort of ordinance or something we can do to help keep him safe as well as the driver safe. I would hate to be seeing, like, I would hate to be the person that accidentally may hit him because he rolls in front of me and be responsible for that. I'm concerned for his safety, the people driving's safety, as well as the village's safety in case something does happen as far as, like, maybe a possible lawsuits and whatnot. And I was just wondering if there's anything maybe we could do to take care of that or help the situation out a little bit. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, we have looked at that. We've discussed this with our police department and his family, too. And, you know, there's, we walk a fine line on what we need to do there, but it is being addressed, not very quickly, but we have to kind of be careful what we do there. But it, we have discussed this, you know, many, many times. Thank you.
Jim Madigan also, would like to talk about road conditions.
Good evening. My name is Jim Madigan. If I'm speaking too loud, please ask me to tone it down. I'm hard of hearing. Mine is about road, road construction, and this is probably the closest I'm going to get. I'm a 40-year resident at 542 North Iowa. They just finished the 500 block of Iowa in front of Iowa Community Center. This morning, four hours, and they were done with one block. Why are we not doing the whole street at one time? Why are we picking and choosing blocks? It's going to take 45 years for me to see the whole six blocks done. Is there a reason because of Plymouth and Ardmore or Plymouth and Vermont that we're having tax money or money problems? Can I ask one question? Are they going to continue on Iowa and continue to complete it? Is there any street that is even listed? Our street was on the agenda in 2014, and when it's on the agenda and budgeted, it was budgeted. And as far as I understand, when you budget things, the money is there to get them done. Why, 10 years later, do I have potholes that are almost four and five inches deep?
Okay. I don't know the exact scheduling on those Iowa, but probably the best would be is before you leave, if you could give us your number and we'll have the Public Works Department get in touch with you.
I ride these streets every day, every morning, and I swear I cannot do it without hitting a pothole every five seconds.
Yeah, somebody will get back to you on that. I don't know the schedule on that. Thank you.
Okay, Bob Gardner, regarding Elm Street.
Last month, the agenda included a report on Elm Street road improvement, and something bothered me about some of the content of that, and I'll get to that in just a minute. Although that report did not include what I would call fully improved curbs, it did include something referred to as modified curbs, which are intended to improve drainage, secure the new asphalt, and give, give a definition between the road and the parkway. I think it's a good plan. I thought it was well presented, well documented, and I support it. My only remaining concern is that it's really never been fully improved, even though it has been resurfaced a couple of times. So I continue to ask for additional consideration on getting it done as soon as it can be done prior to 2028. It seemed to have been scheduled at the end of projects that are scheduled. My other reason for being here really is to apologize. More than once, I've said to you, to administration, that there have been no improvements besides patching and striping since 1980. In the report, what bothered me was there was a reference to resurfacing in 1992, I believe, and 2005. I really don't have an explanation. I was sincere in what I thought, but if I misled, and I could have, I feel bad about that, and so I offer my apologize, apology. Thank you.
Okay, and also, one more time, Cheryl Tucker has a non-agenda item.
This is an item I'm bringing up for the people of Villa Park in front of you, and maybe the board can help. I don't know how many people in Villa Park are aware that Community Congregational Church runs a kids' clothes closet for the families that are in need. They just found out that they will not be receiving donations anymore from the Savers store, and so they are seriously in need of gently-used items for kids to be donated. They open, they're at Calvary. They have a space at Calvary Church at 136 East Highland Avenue. You can reach the church office at 630-834-8352 if you want to call in, but they're in need of any donations that you can provide in the village. So if you're cleaning the closets out for your kids or you're planning on doing something with that, they can badly need, they're in need of clothes of all ages and all sizes. So, and you can drop them off the first Saturday of each month between 9:00 and noon at that location. As we're looking forward, the winter is coming. I hate to say that, that it's going to be getting cold, but they're in need of gently-used winter coats. So if you clean out closets and you find out you have abundancy of children's coats or adults' coats, please keep them in mind to donate them to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
No one else?
Anyone else? Anyone else, public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move to item 6A is a proclamation. Proclaiming October 6th through 12th, 2024 as Fire Prevention Week. And whereas the Village of Villa Park is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our village, and whereas home fires killed 3,790 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 374,300 home fires. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, smoke alarms make them work for you, effectively serves to educate and remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in our homes. And whereas this campaign strives to educate people with key calls to action, install smoke alarms, test them once a month, and replace them after 10 years. And whereas residents who have working smoke alarms have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan as well as working fire extinguishers are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Now, therefore, I, Nick Kazoun, Village President of Villa Park, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the village. I urge all the people of Villa Park to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Villa Park Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2024. Very good advice, and thanks to our Villa Park Fire Department for all they do for us. Thank you. Okay, we're going on to item 7A is a presentation, the Community Fund Commission Summer Landscaping Awards.
How do I get the pictures to show up? I know I hit that one to get more. Hi, everyone. I'm Mary from the Community Fund Commission. This is Kathy Maywood. She's just one-hour maid commissioner, so this is her first gig, so bear with her here. She's already got this gig.
They didn't warn you what they were getting you into.
So anyways, we're here to present the Community Summer Landscaping Awards. We have a lot of beautiful things to show you. The first one is going to be, this is Kevin Latner and Larry Hebert, and they're on 802 South Villa Avenue, and that's like the corner of Villa Avenue and Madison. And they were given an award for, it was the most natural, but we moved it to butterfly-type garden because it really is just, oh, sorry, I got a little ahead of ourselves there. It was very much natural flowers, and you can still drive by on that corner and see. It's still very interesting and beautiful and flag and patriotic. So we'd like to give you an award, and come on up here. And you got a $25 gift card from Crazy Core, so you guys go out and have fun tonight. And then this is your award, so you can hang it up. I wouldn't hang it outside. I would hang it over covered or something. But congratulations, and I suggest everybody out while you're driving. It's a really good villa in Madison. It's really easy to find, and I would take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, this is the Allen Lund family. Come on up. We did, had a theme of the best decorations, and although these pictures probably don't show up the best here, but they have a little trough in, a lovely little dinos, there you go, and a dinosaur that's pacing around their yard. And we really enjoyed it. We enjoyed it so much that we changed the name of the award from Best Use of Decorations to Best Use of Dinosaurs. So you get, you want to hold on to this? That is Michael Anthony $25 gift card, and this is your award. So it's very dinosaur-ish, and again, I would hang it inside. Don't hang it outside, but point it out to everyone. Let me see if we got one more picture of you. If we got that, that, we loved your sign, too, your house. You are welcome. Thank you very much. Is Gigi Gonzalez here? Oh, come on up, Gigi. I'm sure everybody, this is on 944 South Ardmore, and I'm sure everybody drives by that house and goes, oh, that's so pretty, oh, that's so pretty. And I just went the other day to take a few more pictures, and I noticed you had all the Halloween stuff up already, so.
My door, not me.
So anyways, it was just, this won the award for the most colorful, and if you had driven by it and seen it, the pictures don't do it justice. The flowers on the porch are just beautiful, even down to your wreath on your door. It's bright and colorful and cheery. So, oh, there's the flowers on the porch. You can kind of see it there. So we would like to give you the award for most colorful.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome, and we just enjoy your home. And this is, please pardon me, Mocha Hete. It's Mexican grill, and it's right next to McDonald's on the other side of St. Charles Road. It's always packed when I go in there, and it smells delicious, so I think it's a wonderful place.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
So congratulations. Well, and that's the end of our awards for this summer, but I did want to mention that we are going to be having our Fall Jubilee, as you see up there, and you see here, and that's going to be on October 12th, from 12:00 to 6:00. And a lot of fun, different things than if you were there last year. There's going to be a lot more added things there, so it'll be a little bit different. And a big thing is, we're going to be surveying the neighbors and the people that are there to see if they would be interested in supporting some fundraisers that we could use the money to repair the post clock that's on Ardmore and the Prairie Path. We're getting information about how much that's going to cost, and we have just going after maybe saving the clock tower from, from the movie Back to the Future. We have like 100 different ideas that we'd love to just implement, but we want to know how people are going to feel because we don't want to spend a huge amount of time if people don't really care. So look for that when you come to the Jubilee. Thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Now, all the winners, if you'd like to come out, we'll take some pictures and if it's okay with you, we'll put them on the Villa Park website.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to item 8, appointments to commissions. The appointment of John Drogoes as commission member of the Economic Development Commission for a term from appointment until April 30th, 2025, and the appointment of Khalid Sabri as a commission member of the Historical Preservation Commission for a term from appointment to April 30th, 2027. We have a motion for the appointments. Trustee Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Trustee Alfano?
I'll make that second.
Okay, questions or comments? Clark Krennicky.
Trustee Corkery.
Yes.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trustee Patrick.
Yes.
Trustee Alfano.
Yes.
President Kazoun.
Yes. Okay, move on to the consent agenda. The bill listings for the weeks of September 9th, 2024, and September 16th, 2024, in the amount of $909,098.64. Approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 public hearing. Approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2024 Committee of the Whole and the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Yeah, okay. Item D is Resolution of the Village of Villa Park authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Villa Park and Kluber, Inc. for professional architectural and engineering consulting services for interior renovations for Villa Park Fire Station 81, and a resolution approving an employee leasing agreement with MGT Impact Solutions, LLC for Finance Director. And I'll let Major Harline explain items D and E.
The item with Kluber is the design for the shower, I think we've already discussed this one time earlier, and other renovations to Station 81, and then the second one for the organization that was formerly Gov. HR, Gov. Temps. This is just extending the contract for Chuck Howard through, through June with the option to extend. That's probably when, that's, that's based on conversations between management and Director Howard.
Does anyone want to remove any of the items from the resolutions for discussion, to move them to discussion? Trustee Kozar?
I'm just, from a procedural standpoint, why is the Kluber one on the consent agenda versus a normal ordinance or?
It's a small contract. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Small contract. We've discussed this project previously, and it's just, you know, trying to find those things that are non-controversial and getting them, you know, to save time throughout the, through the meeting. The, we, I can't remember, it was a couple of meetings ago, we discussed this in relationship to some other projects that we were doing with Kluber, and just trying to move it forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. How much is the contract with Kluber?
$24,950, $950.
And your spending limit's 25?
Yes.
So it's still something you could make. You could decide on it. You're just basically informing the board of what you're doing?
Well, and I don't want to get, something, a discussion item for later, but this is an agreement, so I can approve a purchase, but this is an agreement between organizations, something we could address with allowing me to have the ability to do short-term agreements up to my spending authority, but the, our legal stance is that this should be separate and not, doesn't necessarily, I don't necessarily have the authority to make the agreement. I can just make a purchase of.
I see. Okay.
Good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Clark Krennicky, please. Oh, thank you. Okay. Can we get a motion for the consent agenda? Trustee Kumar? Second?
I'll second.
Trustee Kozar? Okay, any other questions or comments? Hey, Clark Krennicky.
Trustee Patrick.
Yes.
Trustee Corkery.
Yes.
Trustee Alfano.
Yes.
Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
President Kazoun.
Yes. Okay, move on to item 10A is an ordinance for a first reading. It's an ordinance amending Appendix C, Basic Zoning Ordinance, Article 6, Uses, Article 13, Nonconformities, and Article 14, Measures and Dimensions. Major Harline.
This ordinance approves text amendments in Appendix C, Basic Zoning Ordinance of the Municipal Code, Article 6, Uses, Article 13, Nonconformities, and Article 14, Measures and Defin.
An ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Villa Park Municipal Code establishing administrative fees associated with fleeing and eluding motor vehicles in the Village of Villa Park, Illinois. Major Harline.
This ordinance, as President Kazoun mentioned, would amend Chapter 14 of the Village Code to add a new Article 5 to establish administrative fees associated with a motor vehicle used in an attempt to flee or an attempt to elude a police officer in the Village of Villa Park. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance. We're not necessarily asking for one to waive it, but we do, if you would like to ask Chief Rivas about this, they've had some experience very recently about some issues with fleeing and eluding, and I think there's a detailed memo that describes how frequently this has become a problem. So there would be an administrative, there would be a process to challenge this in an administrative hearing. If you need any additional information, please, this is a good opportunity to ask.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Kozar?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading for this.
Okay. Do we have a second? Trustee Kumar? Questions or comments? Trustee Kumar?
I'm not on the wa, well, we can go ahead with the waiving, and I do, would like to hear Chief Rivas speak.
Sure. Okay. Hey, Clark Krennicky, motion to waive the first reading.
Okay, Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trustee Corkery.
Yes.
Trustee Patrick.
Yes.
Trustee Alfano.
Yes.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
President Kazoun.
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion for the ordinance amending Chapter 14? Trustee Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a second?
I got it.
Trustee Cordova?
Yep.
Okay. Trustee Kumar?
Yeah, now I'd like to hear.
Yeah, now I'd like to hear Chief Rivas speak.
Well, good evening. Do you have any specific questions I could answer?
You talked a little bit about it's becoming very frequent, you sent out a memo about that, and what are the kind of benefits, just so our village is more clear as to when we put this in, improving both the safety of the village and the safety of our police officers.
Well, it's not necessarily a benefit, it's a recovery of some of the costs incurred as we try to pursue somebody who flees and takes off on us, whether it's from a traffic stop or from a crime they might have committed, and they choose not to stop. When the pandemic first started, we had an epidemic as well, and there was an epidemic of vehicles not stopping for any police car at any time, and I experienced this through two different talents that I worked at as police chief. It was just a sign of the times, people obviously were not trying to be close during the pandemic, so they knew to take off, and we were not going to pursue. That was kind of the rules of engagement at that time. Since then, you've had a 200% increase in pursuits and eluding from one year to the next, and another was a 277% increase in the amount of incidents of fleeing and looting. And in the memo, it mentions 141 incidents since January of 2022. Our officers have either terminated, or the supervisor terminated, or we lost sight of the vehicle, and 71% of those types of incidents. This makes sense all across the board, other communities are definitely promulgating and pushing this forward as well, so it's something I think would help, because you're attaching a fee to the vehicle, and if the car is stolen, or if it's used without owner's consent, then that's not an avenue we would pursue. This is basically an administrative process, we would send the fee out in the mail to the registered owner, that person would have 30 days to either comply with it or name who the driver was, and then, once they send it in, they have another 30 days then to pay the fee. And all across the way, there's due process.
Trustee Kumar?
So, basically, the fees are going to do two things, one, recover some of the cost, as you said, but also act as a deterrent for repeated behavior of this sort, I would think, because once you get a ticket, you're probably not going to, you're going to stop, you know, rushing away.
That's the intended outcome.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Cordova?
In those 71 that, I don't want to say get away, but that get terminated, how many of those are stolen? Like, of those, that's 71%, how many of them are stolen? And then, if some, you kind of mentioned it where if someone's car is stolen, or whatever it would be, they're not going to be?
They're not going to go through this process, right. If the car is stolen, or the car is used without owner's consent, we're not going to pursue this administratively. We're going to seek more serious charges. And if it is an aggravated fleeing and looting, we could go through a process where we seize the vehicle outright. So, it just is another avenue to pursue, another tool in our toolbox, which to go after people who commit these types of crimes.
Right. Cool.
And I don't have that percentage for you, for your general question of stolen vehicles.
Sure. Trustee Kozar?
I appreciate our police department, because our police department will go after the bad guys. We know who's going down Roosevelt, we know who's going down North Avenue, and a lot of municipalities are not chasing, and they're not going after the bad guys, and Villa Park is. So, kudos to you guys. I mean, it's dangerous, it's hard, and it is fraught with risk, but you guys are putting forth the extra effort that a lot of municipalities aren't. And as a result, I don't think a lot of people who are watching this, you know, are the ones that are running through our town in stolen cars and that, but just know, if you come to Villa Park, we'll come after you. And it's, you're not just going to skate through, and you're not going to be able to get away. So, stay out of our town, go somewhere else. But I appreciate you, your leadership, and what your department's doing in that regard. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And just a legal clarification, that this is an administrative fee, so the purpose of it and the amount of the fee is actually done in an effort to shift the costs for the police resources that are utilized in responding to this criminal activity. So, it's not a deterrent, because there are actual costs associated with our police department's response to these kinds of activities. So, this is a cost-shifting fee, and it's administrative in nature.
Thank you. Trustee Corkery?
We're talking about a $900 fee here?
Yes, sir.
It costs the police department $900 every time someone runs away?
More.
Why is that?
It costs us more, because in a pursuit, you're looking at multiple vehicles that may be involved from our department, as well as other departments. Then you're also, the time to investigate, you're looking at technology, that all takes time, that also takes officers off the street. The resource is being used, it easily is 900. It was, I did a study on this back in 2005, it was $500 for a crime that was committed to seize a vehicle and put an administrative hold on it, go through an administrative hearing. And when people would say, well, why would you charge such an exorbitant amount? Why should the village of Villa Park people pay for your indiscretion? And that's what I've said back in 2005, that's what I say here today.
So, this is $900 of officer time is spent every time someone?
It's not just time, it's resources, it's technology, it's time that the officers take. It takes a long time to then track that vehicle with this technology.
Which resources?
Excuse me?
Sorry, which resources? I don't understand.
Looking at computers, multiple officers involved in the case, if it gets moved up to investigators, you're having more people involved, it easily becomes $900.
Does it usually go up to investigators?
Sometimes. It just depends on the location of the offender, how far it goes, what crime was committed for that pursuit that took place, or that fleeing and looting, the reason behind it. There's a multitude of factors.
That's all?
Okay. Thank you.
For standard traffic, which we don't pursue, standard ones, I don't want to say what those are, so people don't decide what they can run and not run about, but those ones aren't involved in this.
Well, they may. Let's say, let's just give an easy scenario, a simple traffic stop, person runs a stop sign, we go and pull that car over, if that car takes off before the officer's able to identify the plate of the vehicle, they may go after it for a short amount of time to see if they can identify the vehicle, or unless it becomes too dangerous, they'll terminate at that point. There's a multitude of factors of when they'll terminate, and also supervisors have a discretion as well to terminate that pursuit. So, there could be a situation where we would be on a simple traffic stop, just go to try and identify the vehicle.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Clark Krenicki, please.
Hey, Trustee Kozar?
Yes.
Trustee Alfano?
Yes.
Trustee Corkery?
No.
Trustee Patrick?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar?
Yes.
Trustee Cordova?
Yes.
President Kazoun?
Yes. Okay, item 11A, is an ordinance for a second reading. It's an ordinance amending Section 313A of Chapter 3 of the Villa Park Municipal Code in order to increase by one the maximum number of licenses permitted under the Class AAA Liquor License classification. Major Harline?
The ordinance would add a Class AAA license, increasing the total to four Class AAA licenses. Liquor Commission, the Liquor Commissioner has approved the issuance of this license based on the background check. I believe that the owner is here to make a presentation about this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Cordova, do we have a second? Trustee Kumar? Okay. Before we ask questions, I'd like to have, I'd like to come up and just introduce yourselves and?
I will, I'll start us off here, so to the trustees and President Kazoun, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Nick Brettish, I'm at 909 South Harvard, moved to town in 2020. I am going to be the proposed GM for Lena's Patio and Wine Bar. Just want to thank everybody for the opportunity here to kind of present our business plan that we've been discussing since 2021, when I drive by that building every single day and finally figured something out for it. Thanks to Director McLaughlin for all the help over the past couple of months, and getting all the build-out designs approved and up to code. Other than that, I'm going to introduce my business partner, Ken here, and if you guys got questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, I'll let you know, I am nervous about this. Haven't done this since high school, so, you know, it's a, it's a little nerve-wracking. But thank you again for giving us the time today. My name's Ken Sandu. I actually live in Algonquin, so it is a little bit of a drive for me to get down here, but my wife and I, we came down to Villa Park and absolutely loved going down. I think just this past weekend, she was telling me about St. Charles Road, we were down on the weekend, and it was, it was a happening place, it was, there were, there was people playing music, there was people walking around, it was a great place. We don't have that in Algonquin. We've got a new community that, nothing like that. So, we really, really like Villa Park, and we're proposing a wine bar here at 24 East St. Charles. It's a wine bar, what differentiates us is we've got coffee area, we've got a patio area, and that's really the main thing that I'm looking forward to, is having a, well, it's now a deck, just because of the grading issues, but we have a patio in the back with a little bit of easygoing music, good place to come and work from home, and just a place to relax. It's different than a standard bar, where the standard bars, you go in, I mean, in my younger days, I used to love going to standard bars, just now, as I get older, I just want someplace a little bit quieter, and that's kind of what we're trying to propose here. We're trying to look for a quieter place that is going to attract a little bit of an older population, and I guess I would be considered older. So, I do want to make this place dog-friendly in the back. I have two dogs myself, so, you know, on the patio area, would love to see if we can get some of the locals from neighborhoods to walk over on a Saturday morning, enjoy a coffee on the back patio, have their pets with them, and based off of honey. And very, very interesting, very different, and that's something that I would definitely want to carry, just to show that we're trying to do something different than everybody else. We also have, we're in talks with Moore Brewery for some of their, some of their craft beers that they could supply to us, you know, so we're just ready to go as soon as we get And then, okay, I had a whole bunch here, we got a lot of people here, I'm going to respect everyone's time. I'll get down to who I am, what my experience is. My wife and I, we opened up a restaurant in Elk Grove Village in 2018. My wife always wanted to do a fast-food Indian restaurant concept, so we ended up finding a restaurant that was shutting down. The old owners had some gaming in there, and we ended up purchasing the restaurant, not for the gaming, because we knew nothing about it. We purchased it, she got her restaurant that she wanted, a lot of chopped episodes, a lot of Iron Chef episodes went through that, a lot of different recipes went through me, I think I must have gained about 15 pounds just going through that. So, we ended up doing that. Gaming was honestly kind of a, it was a distraction to us. When we had it, you had these machines that weren't really walled off, they were just making a lot of noise, we had people that we were trying to feed, we were trying to, you know, just get a good experience for. And again, didn't really understand much of it until we hit COVID. And that's when everything stopped. Our landlords would not budge on giving us any sort of credit of any kind. I heard a lot of other landlords did, ours didn't. We went through the PPP program, I must have filled it out wrong, because I barely got enough to cover the rent for those months, and we almost ended up losing the place. Gaming was what kept us in business. And now, since then, we've tried to reopen multiple times, and it just, it hasn't gone well with the reopening. And one of the main reasons it hasn't gone well is, we got some bad news from our landlord saying that they're only going to renew our lease one year at a time. So, anything that we do, anything that we want to invest into, we have to make sure that we get a return within one year, and we're just not meeting that. We wanted to do a little patio in the front, we've got great space for it, we got other plans that we wanted to do, reinvesting in the business. Unfortunately, we're at one year at a time, and we're almost about to lose the place. So, we started looking for a new place, we're like, okay, well, we really liked Villa Park, Nick helped me find this location in Villa Park, and we're going to try something a little bit different this time, and I'm hoping, and that I can get my wife to kind of bring back some of her concept here. She's not ready to do that yet, she's got a full-time job now, ever since really the other place in Elk Grove just didn't do well. So, that's what we're hoping for, is we can make this place successful, and with your support, get this thing off the ground. So, I do have a couple of slides here I wanted to kind of go through. I, I'll just go through them. So, these are the, these are the businesses that we are partnering with, as I mentioned, Cuppy's Bakery, Villa Perk Coffee, Standard Meadery, and Moore Brewing. The initial menu that we've got right now, thanks to Villa Perk Coffee, Brandon has been awesome, and as I said, he, I think he's going to break my legs if I mess up any of these drugs. So, I definitely don't want to disappoint him. And again, Cuppy's Bakery, Dawn has been amazing, and she is super supportive, can't wait for us to open up. Then, we get down to the pairings for some of the wine and some of the craft beers. Again, this is, this is the initial menu, this is what I'm hoping to just start off with. I don't want to take too big of a bite out of something and have it fail. So, we've got some small plates, we got some desserts, Tarama Sue is on there, which is my personal favorite, and then we've got our wines and local craft beers. These are some of the renderings of what this place will look like. On this one, it's kind of tough to see on the screen up there, but we do have a new entrance right underneath where it says Lena's. The current entrance is about three feet off of St. Charles Road, where you're just one oops away from getting hit by a truck. So, we did figure that we wanted a new entrance. On the inside, and I apologize, it's not as clear up there as it is here, that's the primary bar area, where we would hope that, that's where you get that relaxed kind of feeling, you sit back, have some wine in the morning, have some coffee, and then, on nice days, unlike today, you'd be able to go outside and actually sit outside. So, I stuck that?
Put it a little bit lower.
Sorry?
I put it a little bit longer in the presentation, down at the bottom, for the patio.
Oh, the patio, yeah. Yeah, there's the, so that's the, that's the patio area, and as I said, it's actually been changed to a deck. The rendering company was charging way too much money to change that, so, we left it as a patio, but you get the idea. And this is really where I think I see myself spending a lot more time, I see other people working from home spending a lot more time, people in, at nighttime, spending a lot more time with some heaters and things of that nature in the patio area. And, you know, the rest is not so colorful, colorful versions of the other ones. Here's the site plan, I think Director McLaughlin has already shown these, but I'll show this one more time here. shown these, but I'll show this one more time here. We are redoing the parking lot to make it a little more safer than what it is now. We are making a lot of improvements. And I think we are approximately 20 days away, maybe 25 days away from what the contractor has told us from actually completing the project. So we're, we're right there. And with that, I'm going to stop talking. Give somebody else a chance to talk. So thank you so much for your time. I'll take some questions if you guys have any, and I'm really looking forward to this.
Thank you.
Another question.
Trustee Patrick.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I've been looking forward to this presentation. I think if you've watched the last couple of board meetings regarding this, you kind of understand where I'm coming from, from that point of view.
Absolutely.
So I'll go first. I'll get it out of the way, and we'll hear what everybody else has to say. But first of all, I am, first of all, not against the development like this at all. I think it's beneficial. I think this could be a beneficial business to our community. What I really appreciate about what you just told us here is how you're utilizing other local businesses to help with your business plan. I love that you mentioned Cuppy's. They've been around for a long time. The community really supports them, especially when they had their incident, when their, their oven went out. Villa Perk, they just celebrated their one year anniversary last week, or yeah, last week, Saturday. And they're an outstanding, you know, business here. Same, same with Standard, Standard Meadery. And talking with Moore, I really appreciate that. I really do. Moving forward with whatever happens with this, I hope that you continue that business plan, working with our local businesses, because I think that's essential. So I, I really do appreciate that. Now, to get to the point of view that I would like to point out is that a lot of my constituents, a lot of the residents in Villa Park that I have approached here have approached me about the types of gaming establishments that we have popping up all over town. A lot of the gaming establishments that we've approved liquor licenses for still are just that. It seems, and this is what's being relayed to me as well, it seems that these establishments are being brought up just for gambling. Now, I know that you had mentioned that during COVID, that gambling or gaming became instrumental for you to, to succeed. However, I strongly believe that gaming should not be a backup plan for a business, business model or a business plan.
Agreed.
But I understand that. I also understand that once a liquor license is issued to you, it is your right to go to the state and request your gaming license or whatnot. But as a board member and up here as a board, the only power that we have, or the only thing that we have to our advantage to help us with any of these pop-ups is allowing a liquor license or not allowing this. Now, I truly hope that this is a successful business. I, I like hearing, like I said, you partnering with businesses in town especially. I do not want to approve a AAA license. All right? And the reason being is because after we approve that, there is nothing else that we can say. That everything that you tell us here today, whether it's true or not, business plans change. COVID happens. I understand things happen. But then we have no power or authority to say how or what can be established in your building. Gaming is an issue in Villa Park. It is popping up everywhere. And I think the village has to do a better job of monitoring this and understanding what this means to our community. So what I'm going to recommend is tonight is, first of all, I, I'm not going to vote in favor of approving this liquor license. However, I would strongly encourage you to look at the, the, the quadruple E or the
Sure.
E license. So that way you have time to establish your business. Now, I believe that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Director McLaughlin or Manager Harline, is that if in the future, let's say you apply for the, the quadruple E license, you could always reapply for the AAA in time. And I think something like that would give us as a board member a, a little bit more insight as to how your business plan is going to look, and that it's not just going to fail and be a gaming parlor, just that. So that's my concerns. Again, I am not against development. I think this is a, a great opportunity. But my point of view is the type of license in which you're seeking. That's all I have to say. I, I wish you guys good luck with this.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have much to say, except that I agree with what Trustee Patrick said. I just, I think gaming is probably, if not the thing that I hear the most about from residents, then definitely number two or three. So I'd love to see this succeed. I think it's a great plan. I'd love to see you guys seek out a different kind of license. And that's all.
Trust Kuma. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm actually looking at the business model. My concern and my wish is for it to be super successful. We don't want to start out our precedence in Villa Park with businesses coming in with the fear that it's going to fail. And I know you're coming from a perspective as that. I think it's a nice model. First of all, it's an interesting use. I'd like to see a little bit more of what and where you're going to place things and how you're going to make your business unique. Now, I'm, I'm glad you're partnering with our local businesses. That's a start. But there needs to be a uniqueness as a business professional. I know for every single business, what makes your business the special one? So partnering helps you get the coffee, the stuff, like the startup. But we need some special aspect to your business to make it our new Villa Park place to go. Like, and we've had a couple come in recently. Mark is very good at helping businesses get off the ground that are unique. And I think that's kind of important to look at. So I have to agree with Trustee Patrick in that at this point, I would like to see that aspect come out rather than go to the negative of what if it fails? I, I just don't want it to go to that and, and, and have a gaming license. I want to say, I'd like to see what if it succeeds? And, and that's where I'm at. So maybe a different type of license, if, if that is enough for you guys to get a start. You can always apply for gaming if it comes to that. But we're hoping that this is the place. If, if Elk Grove wasn't the place, Villa Park is the place that this new business will take off.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know. So thank you so much for that. I, I completely agree with that, that we should not be looking at what if it fails. It's just, it's, it's in my memory. It's in my recent memory of what if it fails? It's, it's a, it's a good amount of investment that we're doing in the community. I think we're, we're up to almost 350,000 in this. And so it's, it's tough for me as a very conservative person when it comes to finances to say, what if it, what if it doesn't work? What do I do? And to Trustee Patrick, you know, I think you were mentioning that gaming should not be a backup plan. And I completely agree with you. I've seen a lot of gaming establishments by where I live in Carpenter'sville. Almost every single corner has at least two. And it is not a good look. I completely agree with you on that. It is just, it is not a look that I want to go for. It is not a place that I like taking my kids to in the area. But I want to, I'm trying to figure out a way to, to really kind of bring the point across of why it's, it's not a backup plan. It is
A compliment.
It's a compliment. It's a potential use of a crutch, if, just like in my, my recent experience. And that's where I'm coming from on this, is I, nobody wants to start a business thinking, well, what if it fails? But I think I would have to be foolish to not think of that. And again, being pretty conservative with things, that comes to my mind first of, okay, well, so I just lost the kids' college fund. What do I do? So, you know, it's, I, I have to think of it. I know it's probably not, you know, the, the positive way of thinking of some of these things, but that's, that's just unfortunately the way my, my brain works. I, I'm pretty conservative with that.
Okay. Trustia Fano.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you both for coming in tonight and for being very transparent in what you were wanting to do because there were some questions about what was going to happen. And they're, thank you for providing that clarity. One, I, I do have to agree with Trustee Patrick. That is the number one thing that I hear is we really don't want, especially in this newer TIF district, we really don't want that to become what the focus is in this new TIF district. It's just the gaming, because then what other businesses is that going to attract? But I know that in the past, I mean, we talked about this a year ago. We talked about it a couple of times. More recently, we talked about exploring a different type of license where it would be a tavern and beer and wine only that would restrict gaming and then possibly having it so that you could reapply after a certain amount of time for gaming.
He can probably reapply at any time.
Okay. There was some discussion of that and how we might want to handle that on the board. But I do have another question for, for Attorney Wolf, and that's, I know that when it comes to a liquor license, there is a certain like percentage of sales to liquor or food to liquor. Does that, does that apply to gaming as well? Like, is there a limit to the percentage of a business's revenue that applies?
There's nothing in this code, in our code that has any kind of regulation like that.
And nothing in state code?
No.
I also know, I just came back from the IML conference this, this weekend, and this was kind of a hot topic there. There was a session on it. And there is discussion over the state approving online gambling as well, online gaming. And the, the concern with trustees and council people is, well, there goes your revenue generator as well for, at your local level, at the municipal level, because they say their concern is that that would kind of dwindle as well. And for businesses, that would dwindle as well. So I don't know what's going to happen in Springfield, but that is something that has been discussed. I don't know how long that's been discussed, but it is on, on the radar in Springfield. So that, as we look at planning, that also concerns me if this is something that we're going to continue to look at. And then one more thing that I needed clarity for, just to be clear, the board isn't, when we vote on liquor licenses in general, we're not voting to approve the license specifically, correct? We're just approving to
We're increasing the light, the number of licenses by one of this type of license.
Okay. Because I had heard in coffee with the board that we were actually approving that, and I needed clarity on that. So thank you.
Wait, we are approving and
No, that the board approves the liquor licenses. That's what we, that's what we heard in coffee with the board, and that's not the case then.
Yeah, well, we approve the, the board, the commissioner, the liquor commissioner approves the person that's going to apply for it. The board actually approves the license. The, to change in the ordinance, which gives them the license.
So the liquor commissioner has the authority to approve the liquor license that is vested with the liquor commissioner. But if there is no license available, which is what, what is dictated by the village code, and that's what, you know, then the liquor commissioner cannot issue the license. So the board's consideration is to increase the licenses available under a particular classification to allow the liquor commissioner to issue a license within that classification.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's kind of the reason whenever a license is given up, say a business goes out of business or they, they don't mind it, we take away that license.
Okay.
So there is never any time someone comes in and says, there is a license available.
Okay.
So there is always nothing available, and that's why we approve each one at the board level.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Trust Kuma.
So is there a possibility? I mean, I have to say, if I was going to approve this at this point, I am not approving a license with gaming. Now, I understand your concern in the future. I just think it's, it's, it's starting off with the precedence I don't want to start off with in Villa Park. I would love to have this establishment go off the way it should go off. Okay? And, and, and I have confidence. I have confidence in my town. Okay? And, 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 and the people. And I also probably have confidence in your wife's menu coming back into this. A little Daisy food would really help on this menu. So I have confidence in that as well. So that, that would be great in our town. We have a rather large Daisy population at this point. So you have some customers that will be traveling back and forth to the train station and want to catch their samosa somewhere in between. So I'm going to tell you that something like that coming into the menu is going to be lovely in this town. So, so I have confidence in that. I don't want to start the precedence of gaming at this point. That doesn't mean we're against that for the, on to future. We do see that you have a short turnaround, and we do want to get your business off the ground if possible. So I would be willing to make a change in the code to approve a, you know, quadruple E at this point, to get your business off the ground, and then make that decision in the future at one point when we see things picking up and things that you can come back to us at that point. That would be my suggestion at that point. I do not know how the other trustees fall, but that's where I would fall.
Trust Cordova.
So I am 100% for this. Class AAA, have at it. You guys want to do gaming there, have at it. The, I don't think it's, I don't think it's up to a board to say, you guys are not, you know, 350,000, something like that, and, and coming up, and it's supposed to get open in 20 days, 30 days, and they're saying no. That's, that's what's happening. And it's a much bigger problem because if I were you and looking for, or you and looking at a commission or a board that I want to go and spend life savings on to go have a dream of opening up a restaurant or a wine bar, you get people that just say no, that's, that's, that's worrisome. It's disheartening, number one. Number two, Trustia Alfonso kind of bought up the idea of online gaming on your phone and, and being able to do that, that would severely decrease the money that comes into towns, right? So just as a, just some numbers here, in the last three years, you know, we've had revenue that comes to our town, 1.1 million, 79,000, $197.22. $1.7 million in the last three years, last two and a half years, because we're not done with this year, have come into our town with revenue. This is revenue that we get to use on streets. In two more things, we're going to say yes to 1.1 million dollars for landscaping. But we're going to say no, essentially, to people that want to come in and give us revenue in a TIF district. That's, 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 it's going to be on YouTube. We're going to watch it. If I were a builder, if I were a broker of businesses, if I were that, and I saw this, I would not come here. I would go anywhere else. It's, that's, that's what it is. And so I'm sorry. I'm sorry if this ends up getting struck down. I hope you do get to figure it out. But goodness gracious, I would be angry if I were you.
Can we comment real quick?
Sure.
Yeah. So we, we actually did pull those numbers. I became a wizard on the Illinois Gaming Board website, I guess, over the past couple of weeks when we watched the last one. So, and, and we heard the concerns of like potentially taking away profits from other customers. And as you could see on the bottom, this means nothing to mostly everybody in here, but the amount of funds in is continuing to grow in Villa Park, and no one is really losing market share at all. So that's like, we don't want to be a, a stellar place or anything like that. We would have got a building that's 70% less in size and square footage and obviously cost. But that's kind of like, we're using it as a supplement. We're projecting, you know, maybe 120,000 in net revenue that we would get, I don't know, 32% of or whatever the, the split is now, and that we'd see our money back within three to five years instead of 10 to 12 to whoever. It's just a compliment to, one, help hopefully pay for my job and then get staff at higher than minimum wage.
Yeah. And, and the last thing here is, is if you don't want to go to this place, don't. Don't go.
Thank you.
I agree with Trustia Cordova. These guys have come in here and are spending a lot of
Um, these guys have come in here and are spending a lot of money in our town. They took a building that was completely vacant and are turning it into a, a nice place. And if they need, they may not necessarily need it, but we keep saying, we're trying to help businesses come into our town. And if this is a way that we can help them be successful, you know, then I think we need to do that. It's, um, we, we don't have, okay, we have, I think, twenty-seven licenses right now, um, which in a town like this is, is not extremely a lot. And I understand residents' concerns that this will just turn into a gambling place. We have, and I know director McLaughlin and I both feel, you know, when people come in and just want gaming like as a stellar's or something like that, we pretty much say no. But, uh, an idea like this where it's something new, something different, and if, if gaming is going to help them succeed, um, I think we could, we should do that.
Trust Corcoran.
I think the people of Villa Park have spoken to me loud and clear. They don't want any more gaming. Uh, I don't like it. I think it's a predatory business that preys on people with addictions, and I don't plan to support it now or at any point in the future. That is all.
Trust Kuma.
As I, as I said, it looks like this business has a lot in it without the gaming. The gaming is only an aspect, um, in a small aspect, according to you guys, in terms of revenue or whatever. So it's not necessarily a necessary aspect to make the business successful. I'm not sure where trustee Cordova is coming from, um, on his statement, but I do, not supporting gaming does not mean not supporting the business. It's simply not supporting one aspect of what I think is a beautiful business. Um, so I'm, I'm confused at that statement, um, first of all. Um, and I, I see where you're coming from, the fear you're coming from. But the fact that you're pushing it is making me push back even more, right? It's not driving me towards it. It's making me think that the only aspect of your business that's important is gaming. And that's the feeling I'm getting from this conversation, which makes me away, driving me away from making the decision of accepting that particular license, which, you know, would make me kind of sad.
Can I just ask you, what, what changed your mind on this? Because when I spoke to you last week, you were okay with this.
Yeah, I, what changed my mind is that their presentation, the discussion of the kind of business they're putting together, the business model, you know, those things, I mean, I might have been okay at one point, but my changes happened, Nick. I mean, I have to look into what a business, you know, does and what I feel. I mean, actually, his discussion right now, at the very beginning, when you talked about where he came from, how his business succeeded or did not succeed, where it failed, so, or, this is a man who knows how to run a business. He's trying to get his, you know, family off the ground. I have, I have friends in Algonquin, by the way, drive there constantly. I know how far you're coming from to set up this business. Um, and I know Algonquin doesn't have anything like this as well. So I'm, I go there pretty often, um, a very close friend lives there. So given that, I really do want to see this business come up in Villa Park. I just don't want it to become a gaming establishment. And this is, I mean, that's not, I, I know, it, it's, if that's a secondary, it's a secondary. But I don't want that to be the first establishment of your business, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. So that's my concern, and that's what changed my mind on this, not, um, anything else. I, I want you guys to start off, and I'm not willing to give you the gaming license at one point. I'm not super against it. I just want the business to get off the ground without that being the precedence.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Trust your final.
I, um, I kind of feel like we should back up a little bit here, because when this first came up to us a year ago, I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure that all of us agreed to this. I think this was the same conversation we had. When it came up for a vote, there were three of us that said we really couldn't vote on this because of the gaming part. When we said, would there be gaming? And it was, well, we think there might be. It was, mm, I'm not sure about this. And so I'm not sure if that was, if that was relayed, but I think that we do have to be very honest with people who want to come, and, and they are asking for a particular license with the intent of opening a business where gaming is going to be a component to that business model. I think we really do need to just say, hey, don't let that be a huge portion of your business model. That's not really what we're looking for here. We have this TIF district that I was not convinced to pass at first, that runs through our entire town on St. Charles. We have this opportunity to create this beautiful plan, and TIFs have not exactly been thing, something that our village has done well. So we have that opportunity now to do it and to do it right. And so if we're going to do this cautiously, I don't think that attacking each other here on the board over something that is thoughtful and listening to our, our constituents and to our residents, I don't know that that does any good.
I don't think anybody's attacking anybody. Everybody's just giving their point of view here.
Director McLaughlin, did you want to say something?
I have a point of clarification through some of the discussions that's been going on right now. Uh, there's been discussion about a different license, the quad E. Uh, they wouldn't qualify for the quad E. And so there is not an alternative on our books currently. So this was the most appropriate license to ask for. End of sentence. Additionally, from an economic development perspective, in September of twenty twenty-three, when there was the conversation regarding this, the minutes do reflect a general consensus, and gaming was discussed at that time. With that information, they went forward, purchased the property, got permits, went through the construction, and now, as we discussed previously, that's how long it takes for them to now apply for the liquor license, as he stated, and be up and ra, up and operational in thirty to thirty-five days.
Trust your final.
I'm curious if anybody shared any of the video of that discussion. Just because it might have been a consensus on paper, but there was a lengthy discussion, and it seems like this is the same discussion.
Videos are all available on YouTube.
Okay.
Trust Patrick.
Go ahead, go ahead. I've already talked, go ahead.
Trust Cozer.
Um, Mark, while you're up, why don't they qualify for triple or quad E?
The quad E is for a restaurant, a true restaurant, and you have to have fifty percent in food sales. So.
In addition, you have to serve alcohol at tables only, so.
Also correct. So their seating with the bar does not qualify for the quad E for any of their sales.
What's the capacity or the occupancy that they will, that, how many seats? That's probably the better question. I'm not looking for a measurement, a division measurement. How many seats are you going to have in there?
Uh, that's not on that one. Occupancy, it'll be forty, under forty-nine for occupancy.
How many?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, okay.
But I think that's the max, maximum occupancy. My question is, how many seats are you going to have?
Actual capacity?
Actual seats?
Yeah.
Because we saw four tables.
Yeah.
And we saw a bar with maybe a dozen tables at the bar, ten tables, or, or.
Chairs at the bar. Well, less than a dozen, yeah.
So the, um, the site map that you had seen at the last meeting, um, that was just kind of something we just threw together. I didn't actually know that that was going to be taken into consideration for seating. Um, because in the bar area, there is a decent amount of space behind the bar, or I should say in front of the bar, for additional seating, for additional, um, um, some couches, some, um, oh, thank you.
Yeah, in the northeast corner there, right before the patio.
And this also, the site map also doesn't show any of the seating for the back patio area. So there's, there's some, what I like to call a little conversation type of setups in the back where you have, um, um, just, uh, sorry, I'm drawing, drawing a blank here. But, um, those little, the so, outdoor sofa sets, uh, for conversational pieces. So there's, there's a bunch of those in the back. There's, there's other places to like that in the back, just so that it's an easy place to, again, for you to grab a coffee, grab a, grab a wine on a cold day, get the heaters going. And, um, you know, if we had to put a number on occupancy or, or seating, um, it'd probably be close to around forty in that entire location. Can you run your business without gaming? I could definitely run the business without gaming, but as I mentioned, without, uh, with my recent, um, issues with COVID and the slowness in general, it's, I, I've got it built into the plan. I've got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in potential revenue built into the plan. That's what made me go forward with this plan. So, um, now if I were to say, I'll take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of that plan and look at it again, uh, my, my thoughts would be different. How many machines can you have in there? Um.
Have up to six, I think, by the state, but I don't.
Well, I'm saying, like, based on your room. So what the plan was, what we were, um, I don't know where it went, but, um, what we had shown on the plan was we were, we were initially going to do, uh, three machines by the, uh, by the window area, just, uh, and then keep a few tables in that, that main dining area. Um, now, is that the right place for the machines? As of right now, me going in there, when I, when I looked at the place, it looked completely trashed. Um, we looked around, we're like, yeah, this seems about right. Maybe we'll put them right here. Um, that's, that's really the plan. And, you know, I won't know the exact location until it's actually done, which it, we're, we're getting pretty close to it. And I think the, uh, the bathrooms are just finishing up right now. Um, al- almost all the flooring is almost complete. Uh, we're starting plumbing and electrical, uh, this week and finishing that up. And, um, I'm going to be having the contractor looking for a check very soon.
I, I think the south wall, three there, and then, or using the southeast part of the wall where the door used to be, but I don't know if we cover the fire exit. So we also want to see where, like, people congregate when it starts. Like, is the patio as good as, like, that's, uh, I'm sorry, to answer like the uniqueness, I, I've go to all the bars and restaurants in town for the last four and a half years, and I, this is where I thought that this is a different type of clientele. It's not loud music. The police aren't outside the door at two AM every night. Like, we're trying to get a different type of clientele, and if they go to that room, then maybe we have to hit the drawing board and put them by the bar, or if it kills it to start, then we have the whole licensing process with the state to wait out, and maybe we don't do it, but it is in our financial protections for right about a hundred and twenty thousand, which I think would put us in the bottom twenty-five percent of all gaming licenses in town. We're not trying to compete with Dottie's. We'll never do that. People walk into their door for one reason. People could walk in our door for seven, you know? Thank you.
And who's Lena? How'd you come up with the name? Oh, that's actually my middle daughter's name. Uh, yeah. Okay. So again, I, I, I wouldn't want to associate my, my daughter's name with a gambling joint as, as, as it's been called. So, um, yeah, the, the first one that we had was Mira's. That was my youngest daughter. Lena's, I've got my oldest daughter Jasmine. She's waiting for the next spot. We'll see. And are you guys able to participate? Are you making any sort of TIF request?
We have, we have not today, no.
Okay.
It's just all your money that you guys put in?
Yeah, and we have another partner who's a property help, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Trust Patrick.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to reiterate some things that I said earlier, just to clarify, uh, any misunderstandings or miscommunication on, on my behalf. Uh, first and foremost, um, I will always, always put our residents first.
Sure.
Uh, I have to. That is my job. My constituents, um, they are the ones that are coming to me and telling me about, um, what everybody else is saying, is that we want to eliminate gaming parlors in Villa Park. Now, I understand what you're telling me. I completely understand. And just to reiterate, I'm absolutely, positively for development in this community.
But you're going to vote no on this?
I'm going to vote no on this, a hard no, because I represent my residents. The residents that come to me and tell me that they do not want this. Now, with that being said, what I will do is I'm going to request that our liquor commission meets as soon as possible to discuss creating a new liquor license that would allow an establishment like yours to have a first ever license that would allow a non-restaurant to have access to what you need without gaming. That is what I am going to request that our liquor commission meets to do. I think that's the most appropriate, and I think our residents deserve that. I absolutely believe our residents deserve that. I am not against your establishment. I want to make that known. And I am not against development. We need development. These are good projects that you're bringing to us. And again, I love the fact that you're integrating our other local businesses into your business plan. Please keep that direction. But tonight, for this, my residents come first. They have to. So again, I'm requesting that our village liquor commission have a meeting as soon as possible to talk about this. So that way, depending on the outcome tonight, we can get your business up and running as soon as we can, maybe by the next meeting, or maybe in a month from now. Um, I believe this is something that can happen and should happen. But for now, I still have to remain a no, because I have to respect the wishes of my residents.
Okay. Um, I think our attorney Wolf would like, attorney Wolf would like to address something here.
For purposes of if the board wants to consider, um, a recommendation for a change in the, in the code to allow for, uh, a liquor license applicable to this particular establishment, that authority does not vest with the liquor commission. There's an express limited purpose for the liquor commission, which is related to formal disciplinary hearings for licensees. So that is just, that is a legislative action that just can be done by, um, this board here. It doesn't have to go to the commission first.
Perfect. Then, then, um, with that being said, I would like to make a motion that this board take into consideration the implement, uh, the, uh, implementing a new license, uh, that would allow an establishment like this to operate, um, without gaming.
For purposes of, um, considering this procedurally, I think that the actual question that's on the table with respect to this actual license should be addressed first, and then we can, um, get direction from the board regarding that.
Let's do it.
Cancelary issue.
So just, just two things. So the class AAA liquor license is what we're voting on today. Um, and, and the whole thing was, I think you might have said it, was that you've already budgeted for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was going to come to the business, uh, and that's how people do their things, right? We budget for the rest of the year, so I can buy my kids a couple more Christmas gifts, right? So if somebody were to come and say, hey, your budget is no longer viable because we're not going to allow you to do this one thing, how, two things. Number one, how much does that impact the business, just taking a hundred and twenty thousand dollar big chunk out of it? Um, so that's the first question, right? That's just my question. And the second question was, you live in Villa Park, right?
Yes.
Okay.
On South.
Resident here, okay. Perfect.
Trust Kuma.
Um, can you explain that hundred and twenty thousand estimation? How you came up with it? How you expect a hundred and twenty thousand in revenue? Over how much time you're expecting that?
Yeah. Um, so if you can go, I mean, I could present something or email you, like, actual, like, line-by-line items on what it was. Basically, we would put ourselves in the bottom third of what people with gaming licenses in Villa Park make, and that was about the average.
And, and within this year, or what?
Within one calendar year, yeah.
Within one calendar year. So at one, from startup, um, you make about a hundred and twenty thousand.
About half, half as much as the more popular bars in town was kind of what we're looking at. Is, if we can get that, that which we think just the town market in general from.
And then, um, how is your long-term aspect and estimation on that hundred and twenty thousand? Do you expect to get that over the next ten years, or how are you?
I projected it to go up about two percent each year, which is less, about half of what Villa Park's market goes up, which I believe is five point oh eight percent on that last slide for.
Okay. So you projected, yeah. I'd like to see those numbers too.
Sure.
Um, at this point, I'm still, um, a little bit on the fence here overall, um, on this project. And I, I would like to, um, give direction. At this point, I'm going to probably vote no, honestly, on this particular license. But I would like to see those projections, and I would like to also have that consideration to put an extra type of license on the board, because I think constraining businesses also in the way of the type of license they can get constrains the type of business that they can be. And we don't want to do that in any way, anyway. That also is a constraint, saying only you can get a triple E and this is the type you can run. There is no, you know, quadruple E, and then there's another one. It's either you have it all or none is not a way for me to run. I mean, I would like a wine bar to run with less food sales and still be able to run, you know? It doesn't, you know, that should be able to run. So that, that's, that's a concern to me, that we don't even have that kind of thing in Villa Park. That's very important to have such a license, because who knows what other business is going to come up there? You know, it might be a kiddie land that wants, you know, something else, you know? It's just, we need the proper licenses for every type of situation. So I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have that. And so I would really move staff to get such a license on the books as quickly as possible, because I don't want any business to stop, you know, based on the type of license we have.
Okay. Trustee Kozar.
Merk had mentioned, or Director McLaughlin had mentioned that this was up for consensus about a year ago. What was the date of that?
September eleventh.
Okay.
Under new business.
Okay, thank you. Given the discussion, I'd like to throw out a motion to table this till the next meeting. That's my motion.
Okay.
That's a privileged motion, so you have to look for a second.
Yeah. Okay, so motion to postpone until October fourteenth. We have a second for that.
I'll, I'll second that, but I, I just have a quick question. When is the, the grand opening supposed to be, or the opening? You're still a month out?
Yeah, hoping like Halloween time, potentially.
Okay.
So if it goes to the fourteenth, that's not going to slow you down from opening or, I mean, this is like, the good as it gets. This is the good as it gets. We're going to, we're going to delay it, then we got to chit-chat and send emails and...
I don't know what, what liquor distributors.
I will, I will say one thing, though. I mean, yeah, I, I completely understand the, the reason for the delay, but it does stop me. I mean, I, I, I actually have my wife going through, getting artwork right now for, for the walls. And I told her earlier today, I haven't, I haven't slept properly for the last couple of days thinking about this. It's, again, it's a lot of money on the line. I wish we would have had these type of discussions September eleventh or after last year, so that we didn't put this type of investment in and potentially completely, now we're looking at not getting the hundred and twenty thousand that we had proposed or in our projections. You know, if we would have had these discussions last year, I would have walked away from this, no problem. But now, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm deep in it. And I'm, I'm essentially hearing right now that this is, after, after the, the discussion last year, that this is no longer something that we can do. So my question to you guys, who might be on the fence, or a hard no, is if you were in my situation, what would you have done different?
Yes, please.
Trustee Patrick.
If I may, thank you. I appreciate that. I would encourage everybody here and watching tonight to actually go back to the video and watch that discussion. Now, I know that the board had already approved the minutes from that meeting, and I will take responsibility for the error in not seeing that the minutes were wrong. But I encourage all of you to go back to that video and watch exactly what happened and listen to what happened. And you will see that there was not a consensus in favor of this. In fact, it was, you know, it, it was half and half. I think it was at that point that those discussions that you talk about should have been happening. That's when that should have been happening. I understand your investment, and I understand, you know, the delay here. But we are trying to figure out a solution, so that way your business can operate. And I will go back to what I said before. Gaming should not be a backup plan, okay? It should not be. It should not be a backup plan whatsoever, okay? We have a history here in Villa Park, and more recent history, too, of these gaming parlors popping up. And you have to understand from the board's perspective, and when you ask what we should do if we were in your shoes, I would have to ask that question of you, is that if you are here with a population of twenty-five thousand residents and had to look out for their best interest, what would you do? I am representing these residents. I am not trying to make your business fail. I'm not, I want you to be in business. I want it to be successful, and we need development. But our residents come first. That is what we have to think about here. When we issue a AAA liquor license, the board loses all and any power it has about whether or not that establishment can provide gaming or not. That becomes a state issue. So this right here goes back to a whole year ago, where those discussions should have taken place. And again, I encourage anybody watching tonight or listening to go back and re-watch that video and watch that consensus that was taken. That's all I have.
Just a quick question out of curiosity. Has there been any gaming licenses issued since that September twenty twenty-three meeting?
I'll have to defer to President Kazone, our liquor commissioner.
I'd have to check and see. Yes, there were. Actually, because this board approved the one on St. Charles.
Same night.
What's that?
They both came before the, the first, the first discussion was the same night.
Yeah.
How about in the last six years? How many new ones have we had?
I think there's, Lucy want to say six, but you could tell.
Well, in the last six, seven years.
I only have the last three, but yeah, I, I pulled it.
What's that?
In six years, it's been twenty-seven.
Seven, yeah, because that was just started, yeah.
So in six years, in six years, we've had twenty-seven class AAA go through?
No, just twenty-seven.
Total, got it.
Twenty-seven gaming licenses, yeah.
Wait.
Well, twenty-seven alcohol permits for which somebody then.
All within the last six years? Like, when did gaming become legal in Illinois? Like, twelve, something like that?
I read the law.
I think, I feel like it's ten, but, okay.
It was there when I was in college, I remember.
Same, yeah.
And the village hasn't given gaming, well, that's right, we do, but the state has.
And a lot of them were existing licenses.
Right.
You know, as far as new ones, you know what? I had sent an email a while back on that. I'd have to look at that.
I could gather that, too, and send it with our P and L projections, if that helps.
I believe it was twenty twenty-twelve, or, yeah, twenty-twelve, that, when gaming was authorized. Based upon the history of changes in our village code.
Trustee Kumar.
Um, we have also, as we've approved quite a few gaming licenses, we've also denied quite a few places in the last six years of a gaming license for similar reasons. And I'm going to ask Mark also, I would like a mapping of the different types of liquor licenses. I think staff needs to get on that, because if we're going to make an entertainment district or we're going to have that kind of ethic, it's something we need to see where it's going to be, how we're going to do that. We don't want it set all over Villa Park. There has to be locational thought process in that to make it successful, right? So if, if that's what we're considering in our business modeling as a town, I would like to see that mapping. Where are our liquor licenses? What types they are? All color-coded in a nice map, so that we can grow our, all types of businesses. As we said, I mean, I think everybody on the board is for business. Okay? I don't see anyone here saying they don't want business. That doesn't mean they want every aspect of business and not everywhere in town, right? So we, we might have different reasons for why we don't want it in this corner, why we want it in that. You know, that's something that we have to consider as a board, considering what we're getting as feedback from half the residents. As I said, residents are coming and saying, why is this town becoming, you know, sort of looking like the Vegas Strip at this point? And I don't want to make it the Vegas Strip, and I'm not saying your business is like that. I'm just saying, we've got that feedback from other businesses that are in town. It's not about yours in the first place. So we have to consider the whole town as a whole. And that is a concern that has come up multiple times from residents that I've talked to. So, and when they're making that concern, they are also your constituents. They're the ones that are going to attend your business. And if they don't walk in, because you have a game thing, you're losing revenue there, too, right? You, you can estimate the hundred and twenty thousand coming in based on what you see as an average. But that, you don't, you can't read. You're censored, actually, in terms of your, your, your ability to measure those who don't come in, because it's really a gaming establishment in their mind. So you lose a, a set of individuals, you know, in the process. So that estimate, yeah.
Major Hurley wanted to say something.
Couple of things. So if you want to study that depth, I'd ask that you follow our protocol and do that under, like, new business or somewhere for, for a study.
I will do that, I will do that.
And then the other part of this is, essentially, the village gives a license for gaming if they get the state license. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it goes through police department, but basically, if you've got the alcohol permit and you can do the things that the state wants you to do, you get this, you get the local gaming license, the regulation, as we've been discussing here, of gaming licenses is essentially at the, at the increasing number of alcohol or liquor licenses. So the, this board at some point decided to create a quadruple E for restaurants, where you can have a sit-down restaurant, where people sit at, at the table and are served alcohol only at the table, and you, and those could have everything except for gaming. So theoretically, I don't see any reason why we couldn't create a quad A, which is everything but gaming in a tavern setting. So the rest of, but their business model is completely, as Mark was saying, is completely different than, than going for a quad E. So that, I mean, I, that would be, that would not be. I don't know if a quad A would work for their business. That's a question that, that we'd have to explore, but, so those are a couple of things I wanted to, and, and then as far as the, so just to be clear, the reason it was recorded as a consensus in favor is there were three yeses, two, two people abstained, one person was absent, and there was one recusal. Abstentions count towards the majority where there is no, and so that it was recorded that way. So that's, that's what the discussion was. So I don't want to, I mean, we, we, the minutes are accurate. We don't usually show a split of the house. I just happened to have gone back and looked at the video, so we didn't, it's not wrong, but, so I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure people understand what.
Okay, to answer that one question, how many licenses have we issued since I became president? We've issued one, two, three, four, five, six, seven licenses. One, the Captain's Room, Captain V Shrimp, El Barrio, which is the Almonte Casino, Chicago Dance Factory, which I think was the latest one, the Villa Park Shell, Dak Dak Wings, and Casey's. Now, Villa Park Shell and Casey's is just packaged. Dak Dak Wings was also just packaged. And they have since, they have not renewed their license, so, so that's what we've had in the last, like, four, three and a half years. These are liquor licenses. Now, the only ones that, I'm sorry. More, okay, that, yeah, that one is the most recent one, that's correct.
More Delian Tribute were the other two.
Yeah. And several of the, and I, I think only the Captain's Room and El Barrio and Chicago Dance Factory would be, they would have a type of license to have gaming. The other ones would not.
Tribute is a change of location like these other ones.
Yeah, that was just.
Or change of ownership.
Yeah. Okay.
May I add to that? May I add to that, though? So the Captain's Room and Dance Factory and El Barrio, they were all here when they were requesting that the first night, too, though, if I recall. Yeah.
I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time you've come into.
Yeah, well, I, we don't know protocol. We didn't know we were supposed to come until we spoke to President Kazone.
Trustee Kumar.
I don't think it's protocol, so I don't want to say that you have to be.
We were just able to ask them.
We're, we're very ignorant to this.
We were just able to ask them questions to get clarity.
Got it, got it.
We don't want to make you feel that's, that's protocol. It is not.
In, in that regard, our internal processes have improved. So a year ago, we were not as organized as we are now in terms of the liquor license application process. So it is not their fault that, you know, the process was what it was. We have since streamlined that, made it more clear, so that they are before you earlier in the process in working with the liquor commissioner in that process, so just.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Trustee Kozar.
I've got a motion on the table, the latest, for one meeting.
Correct. Yeah, right. Any other, just, Trustee Kumar.
I will second that motion.
It's been.
It's been seconded, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Clerk Konecki, motion to postpone until October fourteenth.
Trustee Patrick.
No.
Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trustee Alfano.
No.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
Trustee Corcoran.
No.
Trustee, let me see, I think we've got everybody. President Kazone.
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll keep on the postpone that. We have some more discussion on this. So we'll come back on the fourteenth, and hopefully we'll have maybe a new ordinance, too, that we can talk about. Your motion, okay.
Trustee Patrick, would you like to make your motion to direct that the village attorney prepare an amendment to the code to allow for a liquor license that would be applicable to the business without the gaming?
Yes, under one circumstance, one issue, is that I believe that this needs to take place as soon as possible. So the authorities that bring this to the board, I hope this happens sooner rather than later at our next meeting, if possible, so that way we stop delaying the progress of their, opening their business as soon as possible.
Okay, so we have a motion to direct the, the attorney to create the license. We have a second on that?
I'll second.
Trustee Corcoran, any questions or comments? Clerk Konecki, please.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
Trustee Alfano.
Yes.
Trustee Patrick.
Yes.
Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trustee Corcoran.
Yes.
President Kazone.
Yes, okay. So we'll be back on the fourteenth.
Sorry for.
Do we need to be back on the fourteenth with any presentation material or anything like that?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. I, I'm just trying to figure out what else, what I can present.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be in touch over, since that time. Trustee Kumar.
Can I ask for a few things?
Sure.
One, given, we're not decided yet if the gaming is going in or not, where you would put it, I'd like a nice picturization of where, where and when you would want gaming. If you can actually draw it into your model, that would help, yeah. So that we see, you know, how this, this establishment is going to take place, given that you said that, because I, I haven't a hundred percent, as I said, made that decision on which type of license that you will be afforded. I understand, and I would also like to see your data come to me in terms of your, your projections.
It's like twenty-seven percent of our revenue.
Yes. Your projections, yes, that would help.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming out here.
Appreciate it, everybody.
Okay. Okay, item twelve A.
What?
Is an ordinance approving a special use for a school at eleven-ten South Villa Avenue? Major Harline.
Uh, yes. Albright Middle School, um, I'm sorry, I'm reading my notes before I'm reading the entry. This ordinance approves petition, PZ twenty-four dash thirteen for a special use for the existing middle school located at one eleven-ten South Villa Avenue as per Exhibit A. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Albright Middle School was annexed into Villa Park in nineteen fifty-eight. It has never officially been given approval for its use. This, again, had unanimous approval at P and Z. Dr. McGlaugh, or doctor?
Wow.
Director.
Director, Director McLaughlin is here to answer any questions, as is Amy Zaire, the Superintendent of District 48.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Trusty Patrick?
I'd like to make that motion.
Hey, do we have a second? Trusty Kumar.
I'd like to make that motion.
A second, okay, thank you. Um, I was at the P and Z meeting and it was pretty much unanimous. Um, there was, I think, just one addition. They requested some trees, extra trees be planted when the construction is undertaken and the district was real hit and was more than willing to help out on that, so. Uh, any questions or comments?
Did you, you came all the way down here and waited this long? You good?
Okay. Trusty Patrick.
Um, I do believe that this is regarding the upcoming referendum that is going to be discussed, and I would just like to say that I know, uh, that the school district and other residents are working hard to try to make sure that this referendum passes, so that way, um, our kids at these schools are safe and secure, along with some other amenities that would be a part of this referendum. So, I really do encourage everybody to take a good look at that. Uh, there are some public meetings, information meetings coming up. If you, tomorrow night, at what time? 6:00 PM at Albright. Um, if you are interested or want to know more information about this, please attend those public information meetings. But again, I've been working very.
So, that we're not going to take a position either way on the referendum, encouraging one way or the other. Informative information is completely appropriate. So, if there's a specific date where you want to inform the public as to when meetings, um, are taking place, so that information can be given to the public, that, that's completely appropriate. But, as a board at this, uh, we do not opine publicly as a board with respect to one way or the other on a position on a referendum question.
Sure, absolutely understood. What I was saying, though, is that these individuals are working hard to disseminate information to you and that I am trying to let, um, the residents know that the information is out there if they seek it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Trusty Kumar.
As a part of District 48, I, it is important for people to make informed decisions. And I do think that you should get the information, understand what's in there, and make your informed decision. Um, I, I ask that residents come out if they really want to know what's going on to one or many of these meetings, or at least access the information that's online with respect to that.
Good, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Hey, Clerk Konecki, please.
Okay, trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trusty Corkery.
Yes.
Trusty Alfano.
Yes.
Trusty Kozar.
Yes.
Trusty Kumar.
Yes.
Trusty Patrick.
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, item 12B is an ordinance authorizing TIF grant programs for facade, tenant, and site improvements in rescinding Resolution 15-7, 15-11, Resolution 2206, and Ordinance 3627. Major Harlan.
This ordinance approves the TIF grant programs for facade, tenant, and site improvements while simultaneously rescinding Resolutions 15-11, Resolution 2206, and Ordinance 3627 for prior grant programs. The Economic Development Commission reviewed the proposed grants on September 18th and voted four to nothing to give a positive recommendation to the village board for consideration. Uh, last time we reviewed this, we, in 2022, we expanded the program only addressing, uh, the idea of instead of just the facades, that we could, uh, do plumbing and electrical improvements to facilitate economic development, e.g., Villa Park perk. Uh, this is a much more comprehensive program and clearly encompasses all TIF districts with the same set of rules. Director McLaughlin is here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for the ordinance? Trusty Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
We have a second. Trusty Kumar? Okay, questions? Trusty Kumar?
I, um, it's more a statement. I'm glad to see the expansion in the program. I think, um, that speaks to the support that Villa Park has for the incoming businesses. Um, I do want the businesses to realize we are there for them. Um, this TIF revenue is out there. It can act as an extra source of, um, support, um, in improving a business. It's not, you're not all on your own in every aspect.
Trusty Alfano.
I have a question that comes from a few constituents, and that is the 100% reimbursement on permit fees. Uh, first of all, would those come from the TIF?
Director McLaughlin, wait here.
Yeah, so the way that the program is structured is that everything needs to be paid for, and so it's a reimbursement. So, we will accept permit fee dollars, but then it is part of the total reimbursement at the back end. So, the reimbursement is a TIF dollar expense, but we are accepting our revenue through the general fund, through our, through our permit fees.
Okay, so they are getting that back from the TIF fund?
Yep.
Got it.
Back is all TIF, but we receive everything upfront where it belongs.
Okay.
So, so we're not, not taking the permit fee that we're owed, and so that our numbers stay true.
Yes.
But then, the TIF will then reimburse.
Okay, then I think my, my second question might, might not matter too much because the rub is, you know, residents don't get any reimbursement for that, and sometimes we don't have an inspector come out at all for some of those permit fees, like, for example, siding. We don't have somebody come out to inspect for the siding, and it's quite a hefty fee. So, that was the question, was like, so do you get a percentage back? But if it's coming from a TIF fund, that makes sense.
Cool.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Clerk Konecki.
Okay, trustee Alfano.
Yes.
Trusty Corkery.
Yes.
Trusty Cordova.
Yes.
Trusty Kumar.
Yes.
Trusty Kozar.
Yes.
Trusty Patrick.
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Item 13A, Resolution of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, approving the purchase, lease, and installation of cardio and strength equipment from Life Fitness LLC through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative in an amount not to exceed $228,629. Major Harlan.
This resolution authorizes the village president to execute an agreement with Life Fitness LLC to lease or purchase cardio and strength equipment for installation of the same or for an amount not to exceed $228,629. The village would waive formal bidding and accept the cooperative purchasing bid of Sourcewell Purchasing Contract 081120-LFF, as in Frank. Staff recommends approval of the resolution to obtain fitness equipment from Life Fitness LLC for the VPRC, uh, and Director Gola is here if you have any questions about that. We're hoping to, uh, open the, the VPRC shortly after the new year begins, and it's advantageous to purchase the equipment at this time so that it's ready for when, that, that people who are considering getting, uh, membership in the fitness center could see some of the equipment when they, uh, take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for the resolution? Trusty Kumar? We have a second. Trusty Cordova? Any questions or comments? Trusty Kumar?
Um, is that lease or buy? Are we buying or leasing? Are we buying half, leasing half? What are we doing?
I'll, we, we looked at this a lot and great, I'll give you a better.
Good, thank you for that question. I also have, uh, Assistant Director Gina Riconella here. Uh, we met as a staff. Gina did a lot of work on putting, uh, a lot of this together, and she probably has a lot of better questions, or she can answer some of the questions better than I can. But, we, the cardio machines, stuff that takes a lot of wear and tear, we're, we're looking at leasing that, as well as the selectorized weight machines, and then purchasing the weight equipment, the plates, um, the benches and that type of thing. Those don't have wear and tear as cardio does, and so we're recommending lease some of that, yeah.
Trusty Kumar.
So, um, I, I, I understand that that seems like a good idea to lease some of the equipment. It, it basically warranties your equipment in some way in, in a lease. It's embedded in that, so that's good that you have come to that conclusion that some of this should be leased and some of it, you know, should be purchased outright. Um, so, I'm glad to hear that.
Trusty Alfano.
I am not opposed to any of the equipment that we need. I want to just say that upfront, but I do want some clarification on, uh, why we're being asked to waive the formal bidding and what the definition of cooperative purchasing bid is.
So, we are not waiving formal bidding.
Oh, isn't that what it says?
That's my fault, that's my writing.
Yeah, the, the actual resolution does not waive formal bidding. It, what it does is explain that it's being purchased or leased through Sourcewell Cooperative Agency, which does the formal competitive bidding. And we're authorized to enter into these contracts to be able to get that competitively bid price without the village itself having to go through the formal bidding process. So, there is no waiver of a competitive bidding process here, but you're just utilizing a cooperative agency to be able to, uh, purchase off of that bid contract.
Got it. Thank you.
We sometimes purchase trucks and vehicles to that similar type of, um, cooperative, like that. Trusty Kumar.
Um, that makes me even happier. I do not want to waive the formal bidding process. I am glad we should get the best price possible for our town on everything we purchase and lease, and I think the bidding process allows that to happen in the most efficient manner as an economist, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Clerk Konecki, please.
Trusty Corkery.
Yes.
Trusty Patrick.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Alfano.
Yes.
Trusty Cordova.
Yes.
Trusty Kozar.
Yes.
Trusty Kumar.
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Item 13B is a resolution for approval of Commissioner Handbook. Major Harlan.
Uh, the proposed resolution approves the Commissioner Handbook, which will serve as a guide to the current and future commissioners. The updated handbook includes feedback from commissioners, department liaisons, and legal counsel. The final version will be available on our website and will be shared when recruiting, recruiting commission vacancies. Uh, staff recommends approval of this resolution, um, and we will share this with the existing commissioners as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Trusty Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Trusty Alfano?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, questions or comments? Trusty Alfano?
Uh, has this been shared with all of the commissions and the chairs through the staff liaisons so that they can, um, verify that all of this is accurate? I had mentioned that earlier in the summertime.
The Director, uh, Director, Assistant Village Manager McVeigh went through that process. She, I, did you want to say anything more than yes?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
It was shared with legal, with department heads, and with the commissioners. Thank you. Obviously, we want it to be a dynamic handbook, so if there's updates that need to happen, anybody can just let me know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Clerk Konecki, please.
Okay, trustee Cordova.
Yes.
Trusty Corkery.
Yes.
Trusty Kozar.
Yes.
Trusty Alfano.
Yes.
Trusty Patrick.
Yes.
Trusty Kumar.
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, item 13C is a resolution of the Village of Villa Park, DuPage County, Illinois, approving landscape park installation services from Hacienda Landscaping, Inc. in Manuka, Illinois, to complete the Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant, the OSLAD Grant, the renovations for recreation amenities for Lyons Park in the amount of $1,125,970. Major Harlan.
It is correct to say waiving in this case, correct? I'll make sure, before I say that. Melissa?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure, because, yeah, okay. Um, it's important to get that right. The proposed resolution of, of authorizes the Board of Trustees of Villa Park to waive the formal competitive bid process and further authorizes the village president to execute a contract with Hacienda Landscaping of Manuka, Illinois for the furnishing, delivery, and installation of the recreational amenities at Lyons Park in the amount of $1,125,970. Based on the recommendation of Upland Design, our design consultant for Lyons Park project, we recommend waiving the bidding requirements pursuant to Section 2-220 of the Village of Villa Park Municipal Code and recommend ordering a contract to Hacienda Landscaping as the lowest responsible base bid. Uh, as the, it is the, um, and the two alternate, the, two alternate bids for purchase and construction of the Lyons Park playground, pickleball courts, basketball court, pergola, open shelter, et cetera, um, for the total of $1,125,970. To waive bidding requires a two-thirds majority affirmative vote.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Trusty Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Trusty Kumar? Okay, questions or comments? Clerk Konecki, please.
Okay, trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Corkery.
Yes.
Trusty Alfano.
Yes.
Trusty Cordova.
Yes.
Trusty Patrick.
Yes.
Trusty Kumar.
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, item 13D is a resolution waiving the bidding requirements, authorizing the execution of a contract for brick pavers for the new Villa Park Recreation Center to LPS Pavement Company in the amount of $139,900. Major Harlan.
This resolution authorizes the Board of Trustees to waive the competitive bid requirement, although we have gone through a competitive bid process for this service. But, uh, as required, provided for in Section 22-220 of the Village Code and to authorize the village president to execute an agreement with LPS Pavement Company of Oswego, Illinois for brick paving work at the Villa Park Recreation Center in the amount of $139,900. Uh, waiving the competitive bidding requires a two-thirds majority affirmative vote. The, this is the second, well, the company that was the second lowest bidder in the original, uh, bid, and they will honor the contract amount of the lowest bidder by waiving of the bid, but will require waiving the bids. The number one, the lowest bid was unable to fulfill the, um, all the requirements of the contract could not bond based on something that happened within the, internally within the company. They're still good company. They just came to us and said, I can't get a bond. We looked at different options, and the best thing was to give it to, to the next company down, and they can move right in. And if we approve it tonight, they'd be able to get on site the first week of October, which is when they're ready to move forward with that project anyway, so.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Trusty Patrick?
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we have a second. Trusty Kumar?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Questions or comments? Trusty Kumar?
I have a question for, um, Melissa. So, the reason we're doing this wave is because, um, we had to switch due to, um, okay. So, I'm trying to figure out why we're, well, in, in this particular agenda, we're waiving a lot of rights, but we have gone through the bidding process. So, I want to clarify that we are going through the bidding process, but we're waiving it for some unforeseen reasons or circumstances that happened.
Yes, and it's the, it's the technical and proper way to approve it, especially in light of the fact that LPS Pavement Company has reduced its contract amount to meet the lowest bidding requirement. So technically, I mean, they're not taking the contract for the price that they actually bid it for. They've reduced it, and so in order for the village to be able to award or, or issue a contract or approve a contract with them, you have to waive the bidding process that was undertaken before and award it to that company. But you are exactly right, the village did undertake a competitively bid process to vet out the appropriate price for this work.
As we did in the previous one, it's just for reasons that, yeah, anyway.
No, that's what I mean. There's certain reasons that we are waiving it.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that, also clarify that to the public that these are still processes that were bid out.
And, yeah. I, one thing I was going to add is, for the bid on the previous agenda item, I think we got six bids, and they were competitive. six bids, and they were competitive. It's just the first one wasn't, we chose not to go with that one, for good reason.
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Patrick?
Thank you. One request that I have of the village is that, and this goes back to 13C as well, is if we could generate a new image or a rendering of where those amenities are going to be placed in the project, as well as if we could show where these paver bricks are going to be. Is it going to be just the parking lot? Where is that going to be? If we could just have a new rendering to share with the board so we know where those amenities are going.
Okay.
Thank you.
What else? Clerk Kinnicki, please.
Okay, Trustee Cordova?
Yes.
Trustee Korkery?
Yes.
Trustee Alfaano?
Yes.
Trustee Kozar?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar?
Yes.
Trustee Patrick?
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, item 13E is a resolution of Village of Villa Park approving and authorizing the execution of a highway authority agreement with Finish Line Investments. Manager Harline.
This resolution authorizes the village president to execute a highway authority agreement with the village of, between the Village of Villa Park, Illinois, and Finish Line Investments, properties of Schaumburg, Illinois, for the protection of the natural environment and human health. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. This is for a project as described in the memo on St. Charles. Mr. Director of Public Works, Mike Guera, is here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion for the resolution. Trustee Cordova?
Yep.
We have a second. Trustee Korkery? Questions or comments? Okay, sign on. Clerk Kinnicki, please.
Okay, Trustee Alfaano?
Yes.
Trustee Kozar?
Yes.
Trustee Patrick?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar?
Yes.
Trustee Cordova?
Yes.
Trustee Korkery?
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, item 14A, unfinished business is the flag status.
Yes.
Manager Harline.
Just really quickly, an update is included in the packet with a diagram of the position of the flag. Staff has gone and measure, and done the technical measurements to figure out where a light and electricity needs to go. They intend to begin work on next week, the week of September 30th. We hope to have it in place before the next staff meeting, or next board meeting.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. And, oh, yeah, go ahead, sir.
I'll just say, thank you, Manager Harline. This was an important topic to a lot of people out there, and thank you for putting this first and foremost, and getting this taken care of in such a short amount of time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for saying that.
Okay, Villa Park Rec Center update.
Yeah, I'm going to start by saying I, I know that you've been asking for programming. Because of the limited amount of time we have, this is something that is pressing, so I brought it to your attention. We will have a discussion of additional program at the next meeting, I promise you. I'm not trying to put you off. I realize that this is not that, so I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be your calcitrant in any sort of, sort of way. But we do have some important decisions that we have to make, and we have to make them soon, and we need, and I think that these are items that would be inappropriate for the board without, to make without, for the staff to make without board input, particularly when it comes to a couple of the items. So during the original discussion a little over a year ago, we had to pare some things down, and some things became, the track became an alternate bid, and then one of the things that we discussed was whether or not to go forward with the full, the terrace, the landscape terrace. So at this point, we are at a point where we can probably, where it's important to make those decisions as it is appropriate with the, with the, I'm trying to find, to get the proper place on my agenda, the, those decisions. And the, the main one would be that, the main item that we need to discuss would be that terrace. And I believe that now would be the most, the best time in terms of most efficient use of resources to make that change. And I have with me Director Guera and Director Gola who can go over this in some detail. But the, the, one of the critical steps, and I'm just having a heck of a time getting this to come up. Oh, there we go. It would help if I have the right section. All right. So we're asking for additional $229,000 in funds to be allocated for the Villa Park Recreation Center. There is a chance that if things come in well on the rest of the project, that we will not need to use this much money, or possibly if everything breaks well, not even any of that money. But it's important to have the authorization so that we can move forward and spend that money, and because we won't know until it's too, you know, this is the time to make that decision about these, about the flag pole, about the landscape terrace and outdoor signage, because a comeback later would be more expensive. And we won't know until we're all the way done about what the final breakdown on the contingency and the allowances are. So there's a lengthy memo, talks about the original $488,891 of contingency, the original amount of $265,000 in allowances, and then there was about $455,000 in owner costs, $150,000 for FFE, furniture fixture and equipment. So, and then there's also a source of funds. None of those have been spent all the way down. There's also a source of funds, the 21 contractors budget, that the amount left over from that, we won't know until everyone's done, but could be as high as $300,000, which easily give us enough money to cover this. But staff is recommending that we move forward with those amounts, and we would be able to do the full landscape terrace. We would be able to erect a flag pole. And then in terms of the signage, I'm going to leave that to directors, actually Director McGlocklin also contributed this, but at $16,500, we could get outdoor signage. And then there's a possibility, and then there's, I think, something to consider, we would recommend in the following year for a LED display type monument sign in front, similar to what we're talking about in front of Village Hall, which we can go through the budgeting process and make as a 2025 budget year process, decision. We have already extended electricity to make that possibility. So that decision was already made, and if there's any other questions or comments, we have staff here to try and answer that.
Trustee Cordova?
So are we voting on this, or just giving a consensus?
Consensus, yeah, that's what we're looking for. And it's only 229.
Yes. Trustee Kumar?
I am in favor of this. However, I, I am waiting for my programming, as I said, and I would like to see that in this next meeting, if possible, because I think it's, it's, it's essential that we have programming to make this an effective, effective community center. That's the main thing.
We'll, we'll send you some information ahead of the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Greg's got stuff working, yes.
Okay, that's one thing. That being said, I think we should consider if, are there any cost savings in getting the LED sign put in now?
I'll leave that up to Director Guera, I think, or Guera and Gola if you want to.
I think the foresight of placing the electrical conduit out there now, which has been done, helps. I don't know if there's any savings. With the help of Deputy Director Michelle House, we went through, I think, three or four different signage companies and kind of got budgetary numbers. And to be honest, I don't think, it's, that's kind of a standalone sign compared to the signs on the building. So I don't think there's a direct savings in, in that one as of right now to get that done and completed. Plus, there's a little bit longer lead time. I believe it's closer to like eight to 12 weeks before you can get the LED, and then there's some probably decisions to be made on the layout, and we didn't want to delay that with the opening of the building. So I think that one's a standalone, that we, I don't think it adds too much savings doing it now.
Trustee Kumar?
I, I'm, I'm just, this is fine, you know, whenever they want to do it, they, you want to do it. But at the same time, I think if there is a lead time, it's a good idea to get all of that, all those pieces in together at the same time. So if there is a turnaround, it's probably going to come in the next year anyway. With the timing, you're saying that we should get it ordered somehow and ready to push it to the next season.
Okay. I think the discussions I had with the manager was to maybe look at next spring.
Okay.
Obviously, Director Gola can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that second phase of Ozland, the outside amenities, is not set to really be finished until next spring.
Oh, okay.
So we could probably factor that in appropriately into the budget and incorporate into that, like the exterior wrap-up of the exterior of the building.
And there's a small chance that if we do, if we decide in the budget process that we want to do one in Village Hall and we do one at the rec center, that they might, it might be.
Be some cost savings in that. Okay. Nice, nice to know.
Yeah, okay.
Trustee Patrick?
I just have two questions. First one is for our residents out there, what is a tentative grand opening date for the Recreation Center? And then, second of all, when we talk about the project regarding the landscaping terrace, or the terrace landscaping, explain what that means, what's going to go into that, and what that's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. Tentatively, we'd like to open right after the holidays. So the first part of January, which would be, I think Thursday is the second, and Friday is the third of January. So I'd like, we'd like to get going on earlier the better because we want to take advantage of everybody's New Year's resolutions and to get in and exercise. And also, when our brochure comes out, we want to give a discount for early bird registration, take advantage of, of buying your memberships so you can start working out right after the first of the year. So tentative date, depending on when we, talked to all the staff, is January 2nd or 3rd, somewhere around there. And then the terrace, thank you for asking about that. The second floor, the designers built in a terrace. It's been engineered for down the road in the future, we can add classroom space. The question was, well, what do we do to open space? Well, we had talked about it in the planning stages, that we could have an area to sit outside in the nicer months. Folks can look out over the baseball field, watch the ballgames, or if moms or dads drop their kids off for programs, they can go, and if it's nice out, of course, they can go up in stairs and sit outside and read a book or do whatever. But there'll be some plantings, a nice flooring, covering, and then there'll be the terrace.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Kumar?
Is there any provision for a fridge or something? Like, if people are sitting there, they're probably going to want either cool drinks or something over there. Do we have a provision there for something, not big, but something, you know, like that, you know?
Not upstairs, we, we'll do have, we'll have concessions on the first floor.
On the first floor?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be vending there. Okay. Just, just good to plan ahead.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Clerk Kinnicki, consensus to spend an extra?
One more thing. While we're asking these questions about the community center, the pricing is an issue that we're also, would like to hear about what you have or what data you have. Not now, Greg, we'll get to it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, by the next week. Right now, I'm good with addressing this issue.
We had a nice lengthy conversation at our last Recreation Commission meeting about pricing and even the hours of the facility, so we'll bring that to the board.
Board as well.
As well, yep.
Okay. Okay, so we have a consensus to grant authority to spend up to an extra $229,000 in funds. Clerk Kinnicki.
Okay, Trustee Cordova?
Yes.
Trustee Korkery?
Yes.
Trustee Patrick?
Yes.
Trustee Alfaano?
Yes.
Trustee Kozar?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar?
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay. I don't believe we have any new business. Anyone looking for new business? Item 16, village commission reports acceptance of the minutes of the Community Fund Commission, June 25, 2024 meeting, and the minutes of the Environmental Concerns Commission, July 25, 2024 meeting. Those are in your packets.
I do have new business.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, I have a request for the mapping of the licenses, and I request staff get to the mapping of the licenses so we can see where things are placed in Villa Park with respect to the liquor licenses.
So just to, oh, sorry.
Just the liquor licenses on a map, color-coded by the type they are.
Second, remember? Yeah. For, because it's going to take more than two hours.
Right.
Okay.
So you want a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will make that motion.
It, it's just actually not something that's on the agenda, but if you want to give a consensus so you can give the manager direction on that, and if, if there is a reason to put it on the upcoming agenda, we can make sure that it's added. But at this point, you can have a discussion on, on a matter, but you can't take official action on something that's not listed on the agenda.
Absolutely. Okay.
Right. Trustee Patrick?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback off of Trustee Kumar, I, I think what would be really beneficial, I mean, if you utilize ArcGIS or something to create a map, kind of similar to what you did with the open land space for me, but if you could also color-code it to the different types of liquor licensing, that would be a great and beneficial visual, for all those visual learners out there to see when discussing future liquor licensing. I think that's, so I would be in favor of a map like that as well.
And just to anticipate, do you want us to also indicate which ones have gaming licenses?
Might as well.
I mean, you might as well. You might as well.
That would be indicative, though, of the type of liquor license also, so that would be color-coded.
Not everyone that has a liquor license has gaming.
Right.
So we could.
Liquor licenses have the ability to have gaming, but the gaming licenses are difficult.
Oh, what you're saying?
Hang on, hold on. You okay? All right, go ahead.
Um, so just what we have is fine. What the state decides is what the state decides. So I just need what Villa Park decides in terms of licenses, yes.
Okay. Okay, so consensus to have staff generate a map of locations of liquor licenses? Clerk Kinnicki.
Okay, Trustee Alfaano?
Yes.
Trustee Patrick?
Yes.
Trustee Cordova?
Yes.
Trustee Korkery?
Yes.
Trustee Kozar?
Yes.
Trustee Kumar?
Yes.
President Kazo.
Yes. Okay, move on to item 17, village clerk's report.
Uh, no report, thank you.
Okay, trustees' report will start on my left. Trustee Alfaano?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate with the fund commission mentioned earlier today, with the commissioners mentioned, the fund commission, Autumn Jubilee is October 12th from noon to 6:00. Costumes are encouraged. Food trucks will be there. There are some craft vendors, there'll be face painting, Hannah tattoo artist, and kids' crafts. So come on out, it'll be a fun time. And they are doing that survey for repairing the clock tower. They have been having discussion over how they would like to make that a year-long activity and event, incorporating lots of different activities. So they are asking, not just the residents, but they did ask me to kind of mention that to the board as well, to see what we had thought about that. I did attend the IML convention this, this past weekend. It was very informative, so thank you for that. I went to some sessions like lead service line updates, which is very exciting. I really had a good time understanding some of that. The Illinois Gaming Commission hosted a session. We had a sister city session, which was interesting. The State House briefing, which I went to last year as well, that's always interesting to hear what's going on in Springfield. One of the things that they encouraged, the speakers who were there encouraged, was that we, as a board, make sure that we really do independently have that communication with our, our local representatives, because they don't always know what is going on in our municipalities, and those decisions that they make sometimes really do affect what And those decisions that they make sometimes really do affect what goes on here, and they might not always understand, because sometimes they never sat here. So it's something for, it's a perspective that they may not know. And they also had a trustee roundtable, so I wanted to thank you for, for letting me go there. I did bring a little swag bag back from the Expo Center, 'cause they just kept handing me stuff, so I'll bring that into the board, the boardroom, and you guys can just have at it.
No.
So thank you very much.
Just bring that to your kid.
Well, no.
Trustee Kumar.
No report today.
Okay, trustee Corkery.
No report this week.
Trustee Patrick.
Thank you for everybody that has been watching out there, that has made it this far. Thank you for staying tuned in. I appreciate that. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, last week, I graduated from Milton Township CERT team membership, and it was a great experience. If you're not familiar with CERT, that's the Community Emergency Response Teams, that are trained in emergency responses. They also can help local municipalities, fire departments, police departments, in some of their duties as well. I know that Villa Park does not have their own CERT team. There are members of the CERT that do live in Villa Park, but one of the benefits that I just mentioned was how some of those CERT team members can assist in some of the duties, to alleviate some of those duties from the police department or the fire department, whether that be in events or whatnot. It could be traffic control, it could be restricting people from coming in or out of venues or whatnot. And it's a great way that the community can get involved in things like that. So I know that we don't have a Villa Park CERT team, but one of the things that we do have that's very similar, or at least we've had in the past, is our Villa Park Police Explorer Program, which is somewhat ways similar to a CERT team. So with that being said, I would like, especially now, when we're talking about budgeting, I would like for the budget, the village to have a discussion on budgeting for our Police Explorer Program and revamping that, so that way we can start engaging some of our youth and getting them involved with the community. We do have a problem with officer retention. Officer retention is not new to Villa Park, and it's not new to the community now. People are not signing up to become police officers as regularly as they're supposed to. And I believe if we utilize a program like our Police Explorer Program, that we have the opportunity to kind of maybe home-grow some of our officers. I know that our Deputy Chief Police, Todd Kubisch, also started off as a Police Explorer and as a Willabook graduate, and I think that is a tremendous accomplishment, is that he started in an Explorer Program and made it all the way to where he is at today. I think we have an opportunity here to tackle some of our retention for our police officers, and also maybe home-grow some of these police officers with our youth, if we put a little bit of money and budget towards revamping our Police Explorer Program. So my request tonight is that during our budget talks, that we talk about how we could revamp our Police Explorer Program. With that being said, I appreciate all of the work that our fire department and our police department do out there on the daily to make sure that we live and can live in a safe place here. It's every day. I hear it on the police scanner all the time. You're constantly at it. Thank you. Thank you all for your hard work. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, trustee Cordova.
Nothing today.
Okay, trustee Kozar.
Two things. One, trustee Althano, thank you for giving up your weekend to go to this, whatever, whatever the IML down in Chicago. I mean, it, being on the board takes up a lot of time, and then to give up a weekend on top of that is appreciated, and the information you brought back. Second thing, we've got a, October 21st is the annual budget workshop. And I'm, we just completed the third quarter, so before that budget workshop, can we have a brief review of how the third quarter revenue and expenses went? Doesn't have to be a lengthy, but just a, kind of a summary going into that, I think would be helpful. And that's it.
Okay. Okay, come to the Village President's Report. We have just a few things. The Villa Park Brew Fest is coming up Saturday, October 5th, at Cortezi Park, from 2:00 to 5:30, put on by our Parks and Rec Department. You can go on the Villa Park website and see if I get any tickets for that. Coffee with the Board will also be on October 5th, 9:00 here in the boardroom. So if you wanna come out and talk to trustees and have coffee and a donut, come on by. It's 9:00 up here. The Kiwanis and Rotary are having their annual Golf Under the Stars, Friday, October 4th. Dinner, I believe, starts at 6:15 at Sugar Creek Golf Course, and that's always a lot of fun. If you get a foursome together and try golfing in the dark, it's, it's a lot of fun. So that is Friday, October 4th. Villa Park Fire Department will have an open house on October 12th. At Station 81, 1440 South Ardmore, 12 to 3:00. There will be a live fire demonstration at 2:30, so it's a great event. Bring your kids out and, you know, talk to our firefighters, and they have a, we have one of the best in DuPage County, so come out and talk to your firefighters. They are your friends. So it's October 12th, 12 to 3:00, and a live fire demonstration at 2:30. And Saturday, I was able to volunteer with the United Community Church, Christian Church in Villa Park. They had their Love Your Neighbor Day. This year, they had 160 volunteers. They were able to help out 33 homeowners between Villa Park, Elmhurst, and Lombard. This was their 10th year. The first year, they had 50 volunteers and they helped 10 homes, or 10 homeowners. So they had a great turnout. It was a hot day, but there was no rain, and did a lot of good, a lot of good for some people that needed help there. So congratulations to Love Your Neighbor Day. And that's all I have.
160 higher than usual?
I believe that's the most they've had, yes. They had, I think, 150 last year. Okay, go to the Village Manager's Report.
Just a few things. We're looking for a date sometime in the week of October 14th for the tri-trail connector ribbon cutting. That project has been close to done for a long time, but we've been waiting until the temperatures came down to put in sod, so that's going in. I've gotten a lot of questions about that. Mentioned last meeting, tours of the Recreation Center. They prefer Thursday after, they prefer afternoons around 3:00 or mornings around 7:30, but if that doesn't work, we'll get something set up, so just let me know. You know, two at a time, preferably. We were looking, so one of the things that came up during the meeting, a question from trustee Kozar, and I think, we've been looking at the possibility of bringing forward an ordinance to allow contract authority for single short-term projects equal to match spending authority, so, and through the organization, so the department head perhaps could have, well, if that's, you know, legal. But anyway, have spending authority, match your contractual authority, 'cause there's a lot of stuff that we've been doing similar to that for a while, and it's really not a necessarily bad practice, but it doesn't agree with what our official practice is, so we'd wanna make that an ordinance. And then, of course, we're gonna work on the ordinance for triple or a quad A, I assume, but we'll call it ordinance for liquor licenses. And then we will have the, just, you know, 'cause anyone's curious about this, we should have all the authorizations for the bus, for the Fund, for the Fund Commission's Autumn Fest, Autumn Jubilee, which has been mentioned, will be on the 12th of October, a busy day. And on the, another busy Saturday, the 5th of October, I'll be participating at least until lunch in the District 45 Strategic Planning Operation. So I think that's everything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to item 21, executive session, item A pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Item B pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C5, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And item C pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C11, regarding litigation when action against affecting or on behalf of the village has been filed and is pending before a court, or when the village finds that an action is probable or imminent. Do we have a motion?
Okay, sure.
We may have an additional request, closed session, regarding the setting of the price to go for the sale of property owned by the village as well.
Wouldn't that be part of this one, or that's separate?
There are two separate things in the Open Meetings Act. So one is to discuss acquisition of property, and the other one is to discuss the setting of the price of property already owned by the village.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to enter executive session to discuss these four items, and then we will adjourn our meeting out of executive session? Trustee Kumar.
I make them.
If you have a second. Trustee Patrick. Okay. Clerk Konecki.
Trustee Kozar.
Yes.
Trustee Corkery.
Yes.
Trustee Althano.
Yes.
Trustee Patrick.
Yes.
Trustee Kumar.
Yes.
Trustee Cordova.
Yes.
President Kazoun.
Yes. Okay, so we will enter executive session, and we will adjourn out of there. So everyone have a great week. Enjoy the cooler fall weather. See you next week.
Two weeks.
Three weeks. Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Oh, that's nice.